I'll tell you Wednesday.
Yes.
Today, Wednesday?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:27. This is the Charter Revision Commission for the City of Bridgeport, Wednesday evening, April 9th, 2025. And we are here, this is a public hearing. So, we are eliciting public testimony pertaining to the charter revision, the revisions for the charter of the City of Bridgeport. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tom Goddard. Commissioner Thomas Goddard. Commissioner John Hauser.
Here.
Commissioner Moses Gonzalez. Commissioner John Marshall Lee. Chair Faith Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Ayesha Wright Abdullah.
Present.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Susan Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly Nims. Commissioner Daed Muhammad McKnight.
Present.
Commissioner Joe Blazek.
Here.
Commissioner Ken Eaton. And Commissioner McKenzie.
Yeah.
We have a call.
Thank you. For tonight's meeting, we welcome the public to come and speak regarding their recommendations, questions, or concerns about the charter. We will have a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Would anyone like to speak? Oh, I don't have the.
Maria Pereira, you're on first on the list.
Oh.
That's all you get tonight.
So.
Do you want this mic on, really?
Yes, we need it for the camera.
Oh, okay.
Start turning it on? Oh my god, okay.
I'd also like to put into the record Exhibit 1, April 9th, 2025. Councilwoman Maria Pereira, Charter Revision Recommendations.
This is number four. Revision number four. I thought I put it in there.
Revision number one for the seat, I'm sorry.
Fourth, I'm sorry, I should say this. Yes, fourth revision. Where new proposals and changes are in red.
Okay, I'm gonna go back into Chapter 5 and finish it last time. That's the City Council Chapter, Section 1D. Right now, somebody resigns or there's a vacancy on the City Council, the remaining council members from the same party, which we all are, we're Democrats, fills the vacancy of that City Council member. But I think it's important, often people are nominated and we don't see an Ethics Commission application. Every other Board of Commission, you have to fill an application out and go to Ethics before, so we don't do that. People are just nominated off the floor, we don't get a resume, we don't get the voter summary card, which is very important, because you must be a member of that party for at least ninety days to fill the vacancy. And so you need that information to make sure that you're appointing somebody, you know. Again, every board commissioner in the city who's appointed except you guys, which I don't agree with, has to go through a background check and all that, but we're doing this off the floor with no information about the person.
Excuse me, I don't have your paperwork.
Yes.
May I, please?
I'm sorry, I only have my copy, and this is your other copy. They were expensive to make because they were colored, they were like fifty something dollars. Those colors, these are expensive. Okay, and then I'm gonna come down to Section 4A, also under the.
I'm sorry, repeat the section?
Section 4A, page four of that document. And it talks, remember we were talking about how the mayor shouldn't be chairing City Council meetings, right? And we took it out of some sections, but there are other sections where he's still listed. So I cleaned that up by taking out where it keeps saying the mayor, the mayor, the mayor related to the City Council. So it's really, I think, self-explanatory. And then, Section 5A. I moved what was left in that section from 5B to 5A to complete it, because the other section was about the mayor's powers. And so the other two were left dangling there and they made no sense. So I just consolidated the remainder of 5B into 5A, and 5A is already listed there. And we added that you could call a special meeting within fourteen days of submission. Proposed B. This is about censorship, okay? To be clear, I served on the school board for six and a half years and I was never even censured. And I've been censured four times on the City Council. Often, these resolutions are thrown on my desk. One time, there wasn't even a resolution. And it's really, quite frankly, I'm not in trench in the corrupt democratic machine. And I clearly understand my role is to represent the interests of my constituents and only my constituents. They're added to the agenda by two-thirds with no advance notice as an emergency. Okay, so I'd like to define that better. One of the founding principles of this country, you have a right to know what you're accused of, you have a right to know who your accuser is, and you have a right to due process. Okay, and that's not being done anymore now. Again, I've never seen anybody else censured in the city of my fourteen years of public service but me. Okay, if there's time, will we get a second three-minute slot, or no?
Yes, yes, to be, to finish up what you've written.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Burns. Councilman Burns.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So I need to identify myself for you.
Commissioner Burns.
Scott Burns.
Commissioner.
My name is Fulver. First of all, thank you all for your time and commitment to this heavy burden. We know it's a lot of work. I just wanna speak a little bit on, and I may have addressed this at one of our earlier meetings, but the idea of the budget cycle. As it stands now, the City Council has roughly five, six weeks to take on the official proposed budget from the mayor, look at any modifications, meet with any and all departments, and assess whatever, you know, might be best for the city through the budget in the upcoming year. And I think you may feel a little rushed yourselves with your work. The Council feels the same way with the budget. So I would just, you know, make a plea that we find a way to expand that calendar of review discourse with department heads. Gives more opportunity for the general public to see the budget that's out there, to think it through and look at what's being proposed, what's being asked for. And I just think it's a pretty rational thing to do, other municipalities, and I'll give you something written, but, you know, they do have longer stretches of budgetary time. And I just think that's a pretty darn important facet to look at. And if there's some concern in terms of, you know, the departments being rushed to get their information at the start of the year, I would just suggest, you know, we're really rotating the calendar back a little bit, because the other factor is when we finish budget now in mid-May, a department might only find out for sure that they have a new person. And then they don't get a chance to hire, you know, before July, when the new year starts. And so if you prove a position, what's the point if you really can't deal with it ahead of time? So those are some rationales for that, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burns.
Mr. Burns? No, I couldn't hear you. If he comes back, okay. Yeah, when he comes back, I apologize.
Councilwoman Lyons, if you'd like to speak, we have a sign-up sheet over here. You're more than welcome.
Would anyone else like to speak for the first time?
I already put you on notice.
Can you, you need to come up here, please. We need to keep a record of who's talking.
Yeah, we need to keep a record. This is official proceedings.
Questions included.
Commissioners, I don't know if it's proper, just to bring some time across. One of my thoughts is we are up against the wall here for ninety days. And this charter has not been changed for, I believe it's been thirty years, even though it's been in lockdown. So one of my ideas for us to consider is to put into the charter that there has to be a Charter Revision Commission put together every seven to ten years. It's just for some consideration. We, as charter members, shouldn't be put under the pressure we're under right now. We've accepted it and we're gonna try our best. What I think for future Charter Revision Commissions, this pressure should not exist.
I'm in agreement with that.
So that's just the thought at this time.
And can I add something else to that? I would like to add to that, that we should have an idea of what we're about to get into. Yes, because.
A little training, Nina?
Yeah, no, because when Maria came in there that first night, she upset me so bad, she has no idea how much she upset.
Don't bring personalities into this.
Okay, I, no, no, wait, wait, hold on.
Let's please finish that comment, because.
Let me, wait, let me finish it. Not that you upset me, what upset me was that you had this information and I've never seen it before. You know what I mean? And that I felt that I should have had that information prior to getting on the commission. You understand what I mean? I shouldn't say you, because it wasn't you, it was the information. Why did you have it and I didn't have it? And I'm the one that's, you know, is sitting on the commission, all of us that are here. We should have had that information prior to having a meeting. We should have knew about those things. That's what I'm saying. You know, not you as the person, don't, please don't take it personally.
Are you saying that people should, before we had that public hearing, are you saying that people should have submitted their testimony prior to that?
No, what I'm saying is that we should have been given something like this. And it should have said, this, the commissioner does this, the commissioner does that. We're looking for the commissioner to do, you know, something.
Some guidance.
Yes, because evidently there were rules. She knew about the rule. We didn't know about the rule.
True.
We should have knew the rule. And any other rules that you expect me to abide by, you have to tell me the rule so that I can abide by it. I don't have a problem abiding by the rule, but I have to know it.
I would agree with you that, you know, because I remember last April, I submitted my application for this.
I did too.
And I don't know why it took a year to appoint, but then it seems like everything, the whole appointment process was rushed, because there were some errors on it. And then there wasn't any time to have, like, it would be, it would have been great to have a training and talk about. Yep, yes.
Okay, but I thought that we had a lot of time.
No, no.
No, no, I mean, prior to us getting here. Because when we put the applications in, I thought they were like compiling stuff, you know, getting prepared, like, I teach college. I know I'm gonna have a class in September. In May, I'll start, you know, compiling my syllabus, looking through what kind of book I'm gonna have for the class. So I thought that's what they were doing.
Realistically, that's the way that you, realistically, that's how, realistically, that's how we would want things to happen.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, but, in lieu of time, it doesn't happen that way, so.
But in the future, can we have that?
We can add, we can.
Oh, Mr. Burns.
There was a question for you, Mr. Burns, Councilman Burns.
Yes, we have a question. Commissioner McKenzie.
Commissioner McKenzie have a question. There were two items that stood out to me from our last meeting in respect to the timeframe and extension you're looking for from that. Now, not only would the city budget have to be conglomerate together, but you have other organizations submitting their budget to the city budget as well. Now, the other question that I have, doesn't the city have to meet the state requirement to submit their budget to the state?
Good question. I don't know that we have to submit our budget. I mean, obviously, we publish it and approve it. That's something I would.
Do you mean, is there, is there a state statute about the timeline?
Once you put together your budget for the City of Bridgeport, okay? This is a fiscal year budget that we have to put together. You have a timeframe and a timeline that you just expressed. Once it's put together, is it have to submit to the state, or where does it go? It don't have to be submitted to the public to get it, but does it go to the state to get approved of?
I don't believe so. I would, yeah, not familiar with.
So the timeline is what we create, right?
So the timeline, you're looking for us to give you ample time to go through the various departments so that they have time to prepare their budget, so that you could have an entire budget for how each department run in the City of Bridgeport.
Correct, that's.
And it sounds like you want time to be able to meet with department heads, have the public view it in order for that input to be provided before you submit it to the mayor.
Correct. Each department gonna need time to prepare the modern budgets and going that if they're gonna have a fiscal year, say they need to have an employment, just like what we talked about. The city clerk, if you change the name from assistant to a deputy, that'll give more money, which that's something that has to follow within the budget.
Correct.
Can I be right with that, too? Yes.
Does anyone have any more questions for Councilman Burns? Yes, Susan.
In the charter currently, it says the later than the first Tuesday in April, each year, the mayor shall present the budget to the Budget Committee. What would you feel would be reasonable? Because it's gotta be timed at the beginning of this process.
Right.
Because of other deadlines on the other side of it, what would be reasonable to you?
I think first of March would be much more in line. So you're thinking of four weeks. Yeah, yeah, it would give us, yeah, at least four more weeks. And again, it's a rush, so.
March 1st, Susan?
Or, you know, as it is now, it's the first Tuesday of April, so.
Councilmember Burry, are.
Well, that sounds like a.
Is that a full budget, is that a full complete budget?
Yes. Separate, however, from the capital budget.
Oh.
Yes.
You are gonna have some recommendations to us sometime.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to recognize John Marshall Lee in attendance.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Michelle Lyons. Ms. Lyons, would you please reiterate your name and your address, please? You council people are just out of control.
Okay, there you go.
Michelle Lyons, 91 Jewett Avenue, Bridgeport, Connecticut, 06606. And I represent the 134th District. I don't know if anybody has received my suggestions. If you, I don't, it looks like, from the conversations I'm seeing, no. So this is what I am going to do. I don't, I can't do it at this moment, but I will get all your emails and send you my suggestions that I have, because I have suggestions on the Code of Ethics, the powers of the City Council, the executive brands, the expectation as what are required to appointed commissioners and elected officials, the creation of contracts, standards review, the election of P&amp;Z commissioners, and better defined lease agreements, and the four terms about versus council versus the mayor, and other situations that I'm not, what I, I'm in agreement, in which I'm not in agreement. But that's just my personal opinion.
Councilwoman, did you supply that to Idina Yevres?
I did.
That's, she's, I believe.
Actually, I supplied it back on February 28th.
She hasn't gotten that to us, but we will make sure that we follow up on that.
Okay.
But also, please send to all of us what you have.
Well, that's why I wanted to make sure that you had seen this.
Thank you.
If you can put your email address there, I will email.
Sure, let me do that. I'll give you my email address.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay. I can email you the.
If you can give us.
All right.
Okay.
And tomorrow, either Faith or I will look into that situation with.
That's my personal. And I'll give you my, before I leave, I'll give you my business card. I just wanted to come as a representative of the 134th District and say that I'm very much interested in the charter change. I wanted to see what people came out from the North End. We should have a little better notice. But I'm in the middle of taking care of somebody that's of the majority, someone sick. So I apologize, but I, you know, if you have it up here again, I'll be more than happy to indicate to more people that are in the North End.
Councilwoman.
We have another public hearing on.
May 6th.
May 6th.
Here?
At, no, this, it will be at the Newfield Library.
Okay, well, either I could just send it out and let them know you'd be at the Newfield Library anyway. But I just wanted to make sure that my, that my suggestions got put in, you know.
Please send.
Whether you like them or not, it's, you know, that's up to you to determine, you know, what is, you know, what you think is proper and not. But I just wanna make sure that I had a few that should go over, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your input is greatly appreciated.
Yes.
This is a lot of work, so.
Thank you. And we appreciate that you put your suggestions in writing. Thank you.
No, I did. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other, would anybody else like to speak for the first time? Councilman Pereira, thank you.
Is that the president? Pardon me?
Yes, John Marshall Lee, this Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, council, yes, thank you.
He'll go after.
Okay.
I'm on page six of my document. So right now, the City Charter requires for any ordinance change that the city attorney provide a legal opinion prior to the board, the council voting on it. And I had to recommend it thirty days, and really, we need to do a better job of making sure whatever attorney is gonna be responsible for that ordinance attend the ordinance meeting. I saw one time where Mark Anastasi took a scrap piece of wrinkled paper and wrote a legal opinion on it while we were gonna vote on it and handed it to the city clerk at the desk.
I'm sorry, can you, you're on.
Page six, on the bottom.
Six, C, okay, thank you.
That would, the legal opinion should not be filed, handed to a city clerk at the meeting where we're voting on the legitimacy of the proposed ordinance. One time, he took a wrinkled piece of paper, scrap, and wrote a legal opinion on it and handed it to the city clerk. It should be stamped in the city clerk's office at least three business days before the public hearing. Right? How can somebody comment on an ordinance and its legitimacy if that is not filed in the city clerk's office, you know, at least three business days before the hearing? You have a right to review that if you wanted to offer testimony. And then I'm coming down, I started to do some stuff on the Board of Education. And that's Chapter 15 on page eight. For those of you who don't know, as you probably know, the census is done every ten years. And then every congressional district in this country has to be redistricted based on population shift. So do our state reps, so do our state senators, so does the City Council. You know who doesn't, hasn't required and hasn't done it in over thirty years? Joe knows. The school system.
Yep.
And right now, there's a massive master plan study. And when it shows, and I'm gonna tell you why it is, it was because of racism. For instance, Thomas Hooker School thirty years ago was eighty-five percent white. And it's only fifty-two percent populated right now. But if you come down, hunt it to Turnpike and make a left onto East Main, and you have all the state streets, Virginia, Louisiana, Minnesota, Texas, those kids should be going to Thomas Hooker School, but they're being bused to be.
Yeah.
Now, Hooker's fifty-two percent populated, and those kids are within even walking distance. And you'll see it all across the maps. And so what I'm doing is taking what's under the City Council about redistricting every ten years based on the sentence, I tweaked it. And the other thing we have to consider is there are contractual maximum classroom sizes, right? You can put eighteen kids in a pre-k, twenty-four in elementary. So you have to look at that, because we have schools that are hundred and three percent populated, which is not good. Schools should never be over ninety percent populated because of shifts in population in a decade where you have to have classrooms to flex. So when you see ninety-five, ninety-eight percent capacity, it's not good. Nothing should be over ninety percent capacity, like Reed School is at ninety-eight. Yet why are we busing kids to Reed School from our neighborhood that should be in Hooker School? Okay, and it's all over the city. It's a problem. All, Latcom's a hundred and three percent, Winthrop's at eighty. Madison is at seventy-two. Why aren't we? And not to mention, there's a good possibility you can save on bus transportation. For those of you who don't know, the third most expensive item in the Board of Ed budget is bus transportation. It's about eighty-five thousand now for a bus. Can I just do these last three on here? This is that document that, that, Ayesha, who created this?
Oh.
Ayesha?
Wait a minute.
This document? You might not have it with you.
This says draft?
It says Charter Revision Commission, March 15th and March 8th meetings. It says prepared by Office of the City Attorney.
Oh, yeah. I brought my draft, I didn't bring that.
Okay, so this is a big problem.
Page?
Page, well, this says page one of six, but I don't, doesn't look like it.
What's that?
It's page one of six.
Officers in Elections?
It's like the fifth page. It says Chapter Two, Officers in Elections?
It's page one.
And it says page one of six on the bottom, but it looks like it's pieces from different sections, so it's kinda hard to give you a real page number.
Is this what you're looking for?
Yes, F. You see F? This is a major error here, whether you voted on it or not. It says that the municipal election held in November 2025 and quadrinarily, quadrinarily, did I do that right? Thereafter, there should be elected two registrar voters who shall hold office of the term of four years. I don't agree with that, but there's a bigger issue.
It's a state law.
It says you may.
It's a state law.
It doesn't say you shall, but you may, it doesn't say you shall. But let me just say what the issue is. The bigger issue is.
What letter, so?
F. F. It's a red.
Okay, I see.
The problem is voters will not ratify or not ratify the City Charter until November 2025. So you cannot start the registrar term in that November election. It would be two years later. So you see how here, effective November 2025? They're saying that registrars will be elected to four-year terms. It can't be effective November 2025, because that's the date voters would vote it up or down. So you might put November 2027. But that would, absolutely not. And then in practice. It says twenty-five, I think, right?
Yes.
No, it says twenty-five, and.
Yeah, that's just our ledger.
Also, somebody already fixed it?
Yeah, that's, so what she's doing is she's keeping tally of a running draft.
Okay, this is what I got from.
Right, she's keeping a tally of a ledger of what everyone comes in and makes a recommendation. So that's not, that's not a final. What you receive, it's gonna be a running. It's all running.
Remember, no changes will take effect this year, because you have to ratify it.
Correct. Correct.
And then it'll be in the future.
Correct. She's just, what's happening is there's so much going on that. It's so much going on, and we're trying to keep track of everything that people are recommending. And so what she's doing is she's trying to put it in one solid place. And so those are recommendations, and we're just gonna come back all together and then we will discuss it.
Okay.
So it's not, that's not what you.
I have said.
I didn't get that. I asked for everything, they didn't give me that. I got it from the court, they didn't send me that.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanna say one other thing that Mr. Hojer said, that we should mandate in the charter, that Charter Revision Commission is formed every seven to ten years. You cannot put that in the charter. Because of.
Excuse me, we can't hear, and the camera is picking up your conversation and not what's happening here. Thank you.
So he just said we should put it in the charter, mandatory, right? But there's only one problem. Under state law, the only entity that can establish a Charter Revision Commission is the City Council by a two-thirds vote. So you can't mandate the council establish a charter commission, because whoever the City Council people have the time.
We mandated that they consider it. We mandated that they consider it.
You could do that. I guess you could say consider it.
It's a terminology, it's a matter of terminology.
But it's like people sometimes put things in 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 documents that we must go to execute.
That was that was just the conversation to think, to give us the thinking.
No, I think he's, I thought he was saying it was you want to put it in there.
He said, no, he, no, he said, let's think about this.
Okay, so remember, and that's what happened the year before when you applied in April.
Yeah.
We started a charter commission. We voted on the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't appoint the members within thirty days of approving the resolution, it dies.
Right. Yeah. It dies.
And so it was totally disorganized by those who were leading the effort.
Right.
So I just want you to know that's why everybody sat, application sat for a while.
A year.
So you might wanna say we would like you to consider, but under state statute, you can't mandate it because only the existing council members have to support it by a two two-thirds vote, I believe.
Two-thirds of the vote, yes.
Okay, so you could maybe put recommend. I would check with.
Okay, that's great. Yes, that's really good information. Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
But yes, please, sir.
And I'm sorry, I didn't get that version and I requested everything, so I'm not sure why that happened.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think that's um pretty much everything. Do you have any questions? I didn't, my my phone number's on the city website. And I never go to sleep before midnight. I'm a night owl.
And you um just wanna make sure you finished everything here.
This.
I did. I believe I did. I think it's self-explan- I just took out all the mayor stuff on the council, you know?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
A- as I said to you before, you know, the mayor shouldn't be running city council meetings or doing any of that.
Does anyone have questions for Maria?
On page seven, you said everything.
Yep.
Of my proposal?
Yes, on your proposal. Everything was gonna be in red. It should that be in red, because on my copy, it's not red.
Let me see.
You have something striked out?
Page seven?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I see something.
Is that something?
No, but that was from my previous proposal.
Okay, that was, okay. Alright, I just.
Anything I added since the last time I came before you is in red. Not just like the actual language change, but my commentary, like my commentary, i- if it's attached to a change, it's just in red. So otherwise, if it's not in red, you've seen it already.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the first time I'm seeing years.
I'm sorry, I have my chair. I'm sorry. You should have, you have to ask the chair.
No, 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 I'm just, that's why.
No, I'm I'm I have my hand raised and and I, not necessarily being seen, Maria saw my hand raised, but through the chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Um I respect your research. You are fact-based, often, regularly enough to listen to. Do you have any other comments about um is there an opportunity for the charter to impose enforcement on duties that are not carried out?
Sure, but I would say, for instance, the the mayor is required to appoint a third of the police commissioners every December. Police commissioners. He has never done it in my fourteen years of service. So there should be a mechanism that, and I haven't gotten it yet. If he doesn't appoint people when he's required to, the city council should be able to do it. That's a nice price to pay for not doing.
So that's, that's why I'm asking you, because I figure you'd have an opinion on that. When he doesn't appoint people, enough people to be uh members of boards and commissions, what do we do there?
Okay, so you know, we have specific board, any board or commission, it it's that terrible language that says if if you don't replace or reappoint the commissioner, they sit there forever.
Expires.
We've had a person on the police commission who expired eighteen years ago. Anna Cruz term expired eighteen years ago. And because we have that provision, so if you remember my previous proposals, I have put something in there that if somebody's term expires, that they can stay for ninety days more. And if the mayor or the administration doesn't reappoint that person or provide a new person, that the city council has the right to appoint. It's in there, in the original proposal.
It is. And Taisha Tombs did bring that up as well.
It's a big problem. And by the way, you know why they don't like to reappoint people? You know why? Because if your term is expired and you don't do what they like, you're gonna get a letter. It's gonna say, thank you for your service, but we no longer need you anymore. And they can do it because you're on an expired term. It's true. Uh you know, it happened to Linda Grace. Linda Grace helped pu- block something in our neighborhood, a development. The person was highly politically connected. He had to, he had to reapply. After only six months, he reapplied and right before he was reaplying, she got a letter saying, thank you for your service. Your service is no longer, she led the effort to block it. So there's there's a lot of damage that goes on with these commissioners that are there long-term, not appointed, because they'll hold that over your head. If you don't vote the way we want you to, we're gonna replace you. So you know, I just fought to get Bob Filodi reappointed. I had a fight, because and Bob Filodi doesn't always agree with my position, but you know what I know about him? He's such a dedicated public servant. You know Bob?
Me too.
Yeah. I like Bob Filodi because I know that he drives out to every single site with maps and stuff. It's like, you go to a meeting, Bob Filodi, you can tell has been there. And to me, that's more important than somebody who's always gonna agree with me. I can deal with people who have a different perspective if I feel that they are doing, not because somebody picks up the phone and said, this is how we need you to vote. I can respect it. He voted to, I wanna remember to voice, no development. He led the drive and the motion to allow some form of development there. And I was livid. Over a hundred people testified against him. But I know he's a good commissioner. And he's very fact-based. He he does all his homework. And for me, that's more important than somebody who always agrees. I I just don't like people who's the administration will pick up the phone and say, if you don't vote for this, we're replacing you, you're being eliminated. So that is not fair. And that's not, you're all, all the people on board of commissions are volunteers. You don't get a penny, which I said, you guys, I said they should get a stipend. Why should you pay for printing and gas to get to meetings and stuff? Don't, you should get some consideration if you're volunteering your time. So anyway, um that's already in there on how to address that. But there are really specific appointments. It says must be made the first meeting in December. Like that specific, he has never done it in my fourteen years. Well, he hasn't been here fourteen years again, but since uh he's been back, he hasn't done it one time. So and you'll see that when you get to the police chapter and the fi- you're gonna see it in there. And he's never done it, ever. Any other questions? I can help anybody with?
Anyone have any other question?
Were there any other areas where you found the executive branch delinquent that you feel that you feel an appropriate change is necessary as opposed to the status quo, which you're which you're pointing out the weakness of?
Well, I've already testified that every cabinet level position, just like it's done by the by the Connecticut legislature and the president, the president can nominate his cabinet level members, right? But in the United, in in our, in the United States Congress, who has to consent and approve? The US Senate, okay? Governor Al Amat, any governor, right, they can nominate who they want in their cabinet level positions, but the legislature has to vote to approve them. And I think that's something that we're missing because in Bridgeport, a lot of people have positions and roles, not because of what they know, but because of who they know. And often, uh we do not have well-run departments. I, if anybody's dealt with building permits, it's a disaster. Okay? CDBG is a disaster. I mean, there's just departments because people have positions, quite frankly, because of who they know and not what they know. And and this is, then you can do that with your family business. You wanna give all your family members jobs, if it's not taxpayer money, that's your business. But I don't think we should ever treat municipal or state government like our personal family businesses. And you know, we have some people who have six, seven family members on the payroll, okay? So and tha- and that becomes problematic. So I think in all of these cases, you can definitely hold, have accountability by telling them, if you don't appoint, ninety days after the term expires, the city council will start a reappointment and have them out with by six months, right? Because we have to have time to do it too. That's some level of accountability. If either you're gonna do it, or your staff is gonna do it, or we're gonna do it. By the way, that's allowed for planning and zoning. Chris Caruso passed that. That when they merged um planning and zoning into one committee, Chris Caruso put something in there, it's in the back chapter. Oh, that's another, you have, you have chapter twenty-two, which is all these miscellaneous things. They either need to be deleted or moved into the right chapter. If you guys should, it's it's in my notes. But like that provision, uh Chris Caruso said that the city council can appoint members to planning and zoning, which is a critical commission, but we have to pass it by sixty percent of the vote, okay? So um and so I would urge you guys to look at things like that because they're good. And I'm not saying, I shouldn't say this, mayor. I've just found that's the way it's been the whole time I've been in public service, whether it was Barisi, Finch. They're just really bad at meeting things that are really specific in the charter. And there are accountability and stuff like that in my mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other? Yes.
Can I ask a little?
Come on. Come on down.
I'll be brief, but I I do agree with the idea that certain uh department positions should be vetted through the council. And I believe other municipalities do that, in particular, everything, fire, police, health, public facilities, economic development. You know, those are really kind of the five big departments in in the city. Uh and I and I do feel if there's that extra layer of vetting from the elected council, that uh you know, we'll we'll end up with the right person. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. As for Commissioner, Commissioner Adam Murray, are there recommendations or sample that you can bring to the table to say, hey, here are some example for other area run to mitigate checks and balance, just what was I, Maria? So that we can take a look at it and vet and put it in, make it up on the charter, because it's very important. If we're gonna look at the city as a economic engine that not only benefit the people, but we're here to make sure whatever we do is a checks and balance for the people of the city of Bridgeport.
Agreed.
It's all about the residents, right?
That's right.
Does anyone else have questions?
Thank you.
No, okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? If you don't wanna speak and would like to write something down, we have uh index cards and pencils over there, if you'd like to do that instead.
School teacher.
Yes, that's right. No, I'm a chair now.
School teacher. That's such a school teacher thing.
Hey, I'm, I wanna hear from everybody.
She has her little cards and pencils, but she.
It's, it opens up, you know, we wanna be sure that anybody can speak, even if they don't wanna get up here and speak. Or share their ideas.
More opportunity.
Exactly.
Or if you have any questions.
Anyone have questions? Thank you. Yes.
Come on up.
You gotta come up.
Then you can just just fill out one of those cards and we'll look at your your question.
I don't see an app for that.
Thank you. Be careful now.
You don't see an app for filling out an index card?
If no one else would like to speak, we will be adjourning.
Oh, John Marshall Lee?
John Marshall Lee.
I have my hand raised because what I've learned from the city council is they can use up space because they declare, and they're accurate, they're members of the public. But they've used in a recent meeting five of the positions, the three-minute positions that they were signed up for, thus blocking public position. So if they can speak to their own council, then I figure I can address you tonight with a brief and no time limit, but it's three minutes, four minutes, and we'll get you out of here. And I apologize to everybody for not being here on time.
John, we welcome you to speak, but just like everyone else had three minutes, we will give you three minutes.
Okay, but but three minutes is longer. And the city council. Well, we'll just talk.
Let's see how it goes.
Let's see, because the police are not here to escort, to escort me away. So I'm talking tonight. My name is John Lee. I attend city council meetings. I listen to Scott and North, North End, Michelle, and to Maria, and have an opinion about that. But I'm an observer of local governance, and that's why I'm happy I'm on this committee. Governance is the structure by which we govern ourselves within the limits of Bridgeport municipal boundaries, subject to the laws and regulations of the state of Connecticut and all the United States laws. We are subject to the pattern set out in our US Constitution as amended infrequently through the years that have included governance checks and balances, which can work in normal times, but happen to be seriously challenged today. How can we restore respect for informed public opinion, okay? When multiple voices are limited to three minutes of speech to a non-responsive city council? Now, there are three members here tonight. I'm not accusing any of them, but they had their own city council rules, which they observed and whatever, and I guess respectable, but we ought to be in a dialogue. Federal government's governance is often represented by a so- stool standing on three legs of authorized activity and actions by the executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch. Yet even with the rule of law, balance can be seriously challenged by circumstances. So I observe that Bridgeport governance cannot depend on an invis- invisible leg. We've got an executive, we have a legislative. They're not equal in power. We ought to be helping to restore some balance there, but we, because we have no judiciary to balance things out. But there is a partner to assist in restoring better governance, and it's the public, which knows and practices civics. I'm working on that separately. But understanding the rights and responsibilities of citizens, being informed and active. And and I just give as examples, we we've heard more already. There are ten districts with decade-long municipal voting levels of less than twenty percent of registered voters. That shows weakness without attention. How do we help deal with that? Can we do that in the charter? I think we ought to address it. Two important boards and commissions have died silently, I've mentioned their their deaths for over twenty years because of the failure to appoint by the authorized party to fair housing and fair rent commissions. Another bullet, more than fifty percent of existing appointments to boards are serving expired terms. How many vacancies exist among the hundred and fifty or more citizen positions? Vacancies affect voting and quorums. Anybody who's been on a board or commission knows that when someone doesn't show up and you have a vacancy anyway, people get sick.
Just so you know, three minutes was up.
I I thank you. I appreciate it. And and if somebody leaves, I'm I.
Respect.
Respect though.
Less than one page. Would it serve a strengthening purpose for citizens wishing to serve being publicly listed in a registry while they wait for a serious opportunity? File your papers, say what you're interested in. Let's know who wants to serve the public on boards and commissions. Without a stipend or with a stipend, I'm I'm not for stipends. I think public service is part of what we do to balance out our rights, okay? And for people who are weak or vulnerable and don't know the practices. Uh it avoids, a registry would avoid the loss of unseen applications. And I know that mine has been lost on more than one occasion through multiple administrations. Would term limits for each board, more available training, including annual ethics review to stake out conflict of interest behavior margins, help to create new perspectives and better results for self-governance? Who can be provided with the task of administering all appointments to boards and commissions six months in advance of expiries, so that volunteers know their future service paths and improve the sense of public service within the community at large? And where is, and finally, where is civics acknowledged as a fundamental city value in the charter? And maybe it's not something, but it it could be a whereas. Do we inform citizens of rights and responsibilities they are ignoring? Or do we fine them for failure to vote, as we do when they park at a meter without paying? And they're not equivalents, but are we so broken that we allow status quo to prevail? In our time-limited review of this document and understanding. In our time-limited review of this document and understanding its implications, let's direct that within five years, we endorse the civic responsible activation of a similar review commission for a period of at least six months to study the entire text and activity, not in competition with a rushed budget process. Time to tell.
Thank you. Thank you. Um John, are you going to provide us that copy?
Yes.
Okay.
Just as I said something else to you, but I figured as long as we were gonna have city council speaking, then I then I could rise to the public.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, are there?
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for joining.
I'll send you the a list.
The chair will recognize a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. So
What time?
So Scott. Um the time, I'm sorry, the time is seven eighteen.
Thank you.
And Steve motioned it and then Susan seconded.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.